I would like to call the regular meeting of the Charter Township of Oxford, excuse me, regular planning commission meeting of the Charter Township of Oxford to order on Thursday, May 25th, 2023. And if we'd all rise and give our respects and play, I appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Susan, if you would note the row, I didn't hear from Mr. Spill, but...
I heard from him.
You did?
He has a county commission.
Well, I thought he did, and that's what I asked Cheryl earlier, too.
So there is a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we had noting in the row. I need approval of the agenda for this evening.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that he approves the agenda for Thursday night, May 25th, 2023.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Nold and seconded by Mr. Ballard over the approval of the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't believe there is anybody here that would have any conflicts, but if you do have one from anything on the agenda tonight, please speak up. Don't see any, so I need approval of the minutes from the planning commission regular meeting of 5:11, 2023. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the planning commission meeting of 5:11, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hungwig and seconded by Mr. Bailey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone here that would like to comment on not scheduled items of this evening's agenda? Now would be the time to make those comments, if you have any. Seeing none, we're gonna move on. Do we have any commissioners' comments at this time? Seeing none from that, we're gonna go, we have no public hearing. We're gonna go into unfinished business, which is 10. It's the PC 23002 zoning ordinance map amendment, rezoning. And I believe we're gonna have, petitioner would be the one that would start this off for us. If you'd like to get up and speak down.
Sure. Good evening, Phil Castoni, Parks and Recreation Director. So this is a carryover from, I think about two months ago, a month and a half ago, where we had the public hearing for the rezoning, straight rezoning of the parcel at 510 South Coates, which is included in the recreational district for Seymour Lake Park when it was bought a number of years ago. It's got the original farmhouse on site that has been used as a caretaker's house that could look over the park, has been rented out since the property has been purchased, has been rented out to, I think, three or four different tenants over the years. This request is to rezone to an R3, so that parcel could then be split off and sold and taken out of the liability hands of the Parks and Recreation Commission and put into the ownership of a resident and then therefore back on the tax rolls as well. So we got a little creative with the building department and the survey crew on the best we could do to maximize the land usage for that parcel. I understand it's non-conforming, but we did the best we could, putting as much property out there along the roadway as possible to make this a feasible rezone request.
Okay, thank you. I think next we're gonna have our... We're gonna hear from Megan. Sorry, I'm sleeping up here. I'm not awake today.
That's okay. Megan Mess, and then I'm from Carlo Wartman Associates as the planning consultant for Oxford Township. I'm gonna run through some highlights from my letter that was dated March 8th, 2023. First off, this is a 25-acre property we split into two separate parcels with the parent parcel, and that's known as parcel B. The survey submitted with a gross area of 23.9 acres and resulting parcel A to a gross acreage of 1.1. And the rezoning is for the 1.1-acre parcel, and that's proposed to be rezoned to R3. You should note that these properties received variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals on February 13th, 2023. Because it received those variances, the lot created would not be non-conforming under the R3. This is a technicality, but it wouldn't be non-conforming. What it would be is conforming per these variances granted. So you are not creating a non-conforming parcel. You're creating a parcel that's already been granted variances upon condition of the rezoning being approved. Also, you, planning commission, recommend approval or recommend denial, and the township board is the final deciding body, and they would have two readings. This is a zoning map amendment, not a conditional amendment, as was similar to what you had in your last meeting. So there's no ability from the petitioner nor from the township to place any conditions on this decision, unlike when you have a site plan or special land use, or even when you have a variance at the zoning board of appeals. In terms of looking at the rezoning itself, in terms of looking at the property itself, there's no significant natural features on the site. Petitioners already talked about structures on the site, how long they've been there, what the state of them is, and why the decision was made to divide the parcel as it was. The existing zoning is recreation, in keeping with as being part of the overall park. It's being proposed to rezone to our three single-family residential, and that's a one-acre minimum, which this is just below in terms of net. In your zoning ordinance, looks at net acreage, which may not have been understood at the time when they looked at the division. The current recreation zoning allows a number of contradictory uses compared to what's allowed in the proposed residential zoning districts, including conservation areas, gathering spaces, and general commercial-oriented uses, as opposed to the more residential and institutional uses that are allowed in the R3, including residential facilities, libraries, and places of worship. And on our letter, you can see the permitted uses and the special land uses and accessory uses for each category. When you're looking at a rezoning, you need to look at not only what the use would be according to the applicant, but all the uses that are allowed in that zoning district. As a single-family dwelling unit, this would generate potentially more traffic, according to the Institute for Transportation Engineers, than a park use. However, this is a larger park, and from what I understand, the single-family dwelling has been rented out as that and has been generating the amount of traffic for a number of years. So really, while it might look at as a change when you just look at the numbers, in terms of the current use, that would probably remain the same. In terms of the zoning, there is the existing nonconformity in the 24.2 feet, and then, as I said, that there are a number of setbacks that were received variances. And so, again, you would not be creating a nonconforming parcel. It's a parcel that conforms, that parcel that conforms with the variances granted, and then that existing nonconformity of 24 feet for the front yard setback that's been there since, I'm assuming, since the farmhouse was first there. And usually, a lot of times with old farmhouses like that, the setbacks came after the house in terms of what they were. There's a number of things that you should look at when you're looking at any rezoning, and first and foremost is the master plan. There are a number of things in your 2019 master plan to look at. You have a residential land use goal that the density, type, and character of residential development in Oxford, the housing needs of township residents, while maintaining and enhancing the traditional village and resort-style development found in the Oxford area. Also, we highlighted, we wanted to highlight for you strategy number four under residential in looking in that the township should avoid higher density residentialism in environmentally sensitive areas of the township. This particular area overall has been flagged as a hub in your green infrastructure plan, which means that there's a lot of natural resources in the area. It's part of that larger area, and since it's part of the park, that makes sense. Probably taking this one and a half, you know, this less than an acre out for a residential zoning district when it's still, when it's likely the continuation of the single-family use there, wouldn't have significant impact on that green infrastructure. They're not gonna be probably dropping another well or doing anything to pollute. Also, you can take, you should take into account your 2016 Township's Parks and Recreation Master Plan. One of the recreational land use goals was to continue to consider future recreation needs of the community and develop a vision for community parks and recreation, which will lead to future parkland dedication and development. Also, objectives two, four, and six are all looking to maintain and upgrade the existing parks, develop new recreational parks and facilities, acquire, dedicate parkland and administration of parks and recreation. All of those objectives take money. You've had a switch in recreation director since the time this property was bought to now, and then to acquire that additional and maintain the additional parkland, the township is selling sites that are not serving the public or need of the Parks and Recreation Department. And so, this subject site is leased and is served as a single-family dwelling, and so a change has been the planning, I'm sorry, the recreation department's philosophy in terms of dealing with properties that don't directly go to parks and recreation. I'm highlighting that because this particular property, as you can see on the map that is on the screens right now, is planned as recreation. And that, so if you were to recommend in the township board or to grant this rezoning, it would be contradictory to the future land use plan. And you can only do that when there's been a significant change from the circumstances surrounding which the future land use map was created. So this request of rezoning can be seen as consistent with the residential land use goals and objectives and strategies of the master plan and the 2016 Township Parks and Recreation Plan. However, because of, it's not creating additional density on the site, and then also it's looking to, it's looking to implement the Parks and Recreation Plan by creating more money to go into those coffers, to go through those goals. But you would need to find that those circumstances have changed to a point that justifies the proposed rezoning. Since the site is located over a township park, it's likely that eventually the residential use of the house would cease, since the Parks Department decided to sell the resident and associate the property. Circumstances have changed that would justify the proposed rezoning to the R3 district. Another standard that you look at is compatibility, and that the compatibility of the site's physical, geological, hydraulic, and environmental features with uses or special uses permitted in the proposed zoning district. The site appears to be generally physically compatible with the potential uses in that zoning district, which are not dissimilar from the other zoning districts that are larger in their minimum lot size and width than here, but the uses are the same. And then finally, there's a standard of the surrounding area, that the compatibility of the potential uses in the allowed in the proposed zoning district with the surrounding areas in terms of impacts on the environment, density, nature of use, traffic impacts, aesthetics, infrastructure, and potential influence on property values. The potential uses in the proposed zoning district appear to be consistent with other adjacent single-family and recreational areas. The area is not within the water and sewer district, so it's never gonna be, it's never gonna be more than one acre. I'm sorry, the minimum, the lot size is never gonna be less than one acre, just because you've got to be able to work on the septic system. Here, you're not gonna be plugged into sewer and water, and so that's when density, a lot size, can get less than an acre. In our comments, we highlighted that the proposed zoning district appears to be consistent with adjacent single-family and recreational units, and it would likely result in negligible traffic impacts. I've had some questions, there were some questions in the public hearing the last time, and had questions about, does this set a precedent? So does this then set up Coates Road for, you know, this area for more one-acre lots? And if you are concerned about that, but you are inclined to recommend, number one, again, you must cite what the circumstances have changed. And is the circumstances that have changed is because it's owned by the, because you've had a change in philosophy at the recreation department that only affects this parcel or any parcel that's owned by the recreation department? Also, you would need to make findings in your motion as to why this parcel is unique in this circumstance, i.e. you can't see it happening in other places. If you could not see that, then likely what you would, what you would need to think about is whether recommending denial is the appropriate action.
I have a question.
Sure.
The original parcel that was purchased was 25 acres, correct? 25 some acre?
The parcel that's to be split is 25 acres. I can't, I don't know if that was the size of the original parcel, when the parcel when it was...
I believe it's been a couple parcels next we chose that were bought, and they were combined at one point.
So my question is, is then, is the parcels that were split, what's left, were they not joined with the parcel of the park? I mean, isn't this all one parcel, or no? After the property was purchased altogether, was it not merged with the park?
That's a good question. I thought it was, but I don't. Based on the figure on page three with the aerial, with the red outline, and showing it all as one parcel.
Mr. Chair, if I may add?
Yes.
The attorney letter says, "By way of history, in 2011, the Oxford Parks and Recreation Department purchased a seven-acre parcel and combined it with the existing park area known as Seymour Lake Park. The parcel was in the FS2 Suburban Farms zoning district at the time of the purchase. The parcel contained a residence home, which the park, the department currently rents out to tenants to use as a single-family residence."
See, when you look at the diagram that shows where the drive goes out to Coates Road there, and I'm backwards looking at it from where you're looking at it, it shows it with one parcel ID number on that property.
Yeah, that...
And I can blow it up a little bit more, but it says 0430-30-200-058. So it shows, I don't know if you can see my little cursor going around here, it shows all this property, all the way, including this piece down here coming across here, like it shows all this under one parcel ID. So at some point, something had to be combined. So that's what, John, that's what you're reading.
Yes, it was combined in 2011.
Yeah.
And I just want to add one short, go ahead, Megan.
I just want to clarify, what's up there in terms of the parcel B? That is...
This one?
The smaller one.
Yeah, this one.
So the smaller one, that's the...
You mean this one?
Yes, I mean that one, the smaller one. That's the lot split that I believe after the applicant got the variances, when...
Right here.
Yeah, that went to, with the variances, went to the County Register of Deeds. And has that been processed yet as a lot split, or is it waiting for this?
It has to wait for this.
It has to wait for this.
Yeah, it was a condition of the split that it was rezoned, so it would have not went down there.
So there's no way that these, there would be a new parcel ID number yet, or that those boundaries were shown on the aerial maps that we used through Oakland County to create that image?
I think the question was, is, does it, it's saying the lot area is 25 acres, or if it's all one parcel, the lot area would be over 100 acres if it's one parcel for the park. So where's the 25 going from?
It says, that's why I was pointing out where it says part of parent parcel, this parcel 04-30-200-58, which is 058. That's what I just read earlier in that other description. And this is your property here. As the line goes this way, and if you were to continue this line north and south, which is the way it heads, your other parcel of property, which is all contiguous with that, then this is what you're trying to pull out of. So this is the proposed B, which would be the 23909, and then this would be the proposed piece that when you look down at the bigger view of it, which would be parcel A, which would be the 1.1, but net area of .97. So this is the parcel you're trying to pull out of the other parcel.
That's the parcel that...
And that's the parcel we're all talking about.
Yes.
But it still says 23.9 acres, which is, confuses me.
That's gonna, that's what's proposed to be left if it was divided.
Well, would it be, or 100 acres left?
So...
I don't know. I'm trying to make, I'm trying to make this simple.
But the only thing that you are looking at is the 0.970 net acre. So that smaller one, that's the only thing that's proposed.
1.318.
Yeah, I did. I was just wondering why they're referring to the other remaining parcel. The remaining parcel.
The 23.9.
Yeah.
The 25 is that where it kind of dogloves over.
This piece right here.
Yes.
The tooth, or whatever you want to call it.
Right.
Here's the tooth right here.
Right. The way it should be drawn properly is there should be a line.
See, if you drew this, if this line was drawn right straight through here.
Indicating that there's two pieces of property.
This would be the whole parent parcel.
But I don't think there is. That's, I think, based on the drawing, it looks like it can be termed a divot when it's not. It's all one.
Oh, it is, so if that is your parcel ID, then the 04-30-200-058?
Yeah, because if you see the picture, the picture on the left, it's all one.
That's the whole park. That's what I was, and that's what Ed is trying to get.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand. Then that would be 10925.
Well, it's 100 plus.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
That's exactly what the attorney said. In 211, the Oxford Parks and Recreation Department purchased a seven-acre parcel and combined it with the existing park.
But they're not, they're not saying that either. They're saying 23.9 acres are...
That may be a mistake, I don't know.
That's what I'm getting confused with, is a 23.9.
What's, the decision before you is about the small and...
Yeah, I understand that.
I don't want to convolute it anymore, because it's two. I believe it is all one piece of property, and they're trying to take out 1.13 acres for the net area of .97 of an acre. That's what they're trying to take out of the whole parcel. It blew.
And rezoned to R3.
They want to rezon it from recreational to R, or excuse me, R3, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Was it R3 or...? No, R3.
R3. Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Nold.
I've got a question, not that we establish that it's a whole acreage there.
Right.
The Parks and Recs master plan, when was that dated?
2016, and it's currently being updated.
And then the future land use of Oxford Township, what is that date of that map?
2019.
Yes, 2019. That's our last one.
Yes, that's our last one.
So my question is, Parks, the Park Department bought that with the intent of it being combined with the existing park. They changed it from an asset to suburban farms to a recreation, and they've been operating that way ever since, since 2011. The philosophy has changed from what we were told. If they do not get this granted, the 1.13 acres granted, what changes with the Parks and Recs?
I guess nothing changes, because now we're stuck as being a landlord, and we continue to rent it out and have that liability over us, and we don't have the revenue from the sale to put back into the parks. We have the maintenance of the house to expand.
No different than what you had in 2011 when you bought it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. This is a problematic land use issue, and my concern is it's inconsistent with the land use map as we have it today. And I'll save my other points for later. I'll let some other folks ask some questions. They may ask my questions.
Well, I guess I would have it. Are we asking questions now?
Feel free to ask questions. We are open for discussion. We had our presentation from our audience representative, Megan Gavitt.
First of all, I don't think we've been formally introduced anyway, and I'm sorry about that, but...
That's okay.
I totally commend what you're trying to do. I think it makes a lot of sense. I guess my question, why not just make it a five-acre parcel and sell it?
We need, it's, behind that house is tied into our maintenance yard. We can't afford to give up that much land.
Okay, let's go back to the other drawing, and I gotta look at something.
There is nothing else you can do to add four more acres or three points that way, whatever it is, 3.92, or to make it a five-acre parcel?
I'm gonna reduce this down just one tad.
What does a five-acre parcel do for you?
It makes it consistent with the neighborhood.
Okay, that's, thank you. I wanted, I wanted, I wanted you to say it out verbally.
Oh, okay, because there's no rezoning. Well, yeah, there is.
Megan, you know that, we had an extra session.
So one of the questions, sorry, can I ask you?
Yeah, yeah.
Megan, can I ask a question?
The chair who's, who should be going to speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballard.
Sorry about that.
What if you have a question you'd like to ask, and I think you want to ask Megan?
I would, yes, please.
Megan, if you'd please go back a little further for us. You gotta get back in order.
Sorry about that, Megan. Sometimes I talk out of turn, and I forget my, I forget my spot. So one of the, one of the things I think that you had said is that the current applicant has to have, there was requirements that you stated that we had had to meet, and it was, it had to have substantial change in...
A significant change.
A significant, yeah. Can you please repeat exactly?
Of the properties.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So in order to grant a rezoning contrary to the future land use map, the planning commission would need to find that circumstances have changed to a point that justifies the proposed rezoning.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, you guys answered. Now let's go to this side for a second, because we've been listening to a lot of conversation to my right, everybody else is left in the audience. Mr. Turner, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this moment?
Well, as I studied this request, I think there were about four items that concerned me. Number one was that this is really a spot zoning, because even the other residential zoning in the area is a minimum of five acres. There isn't any one-acre parcels. Number two was the fact that there had to be six variants approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals to make this even work, one of which is a close proximity to the road of the building. And then I've already mentioned that the spot zoning, so, and the fact that if we look at our master plan and the desires of the township to not do spot zoning, I don't know that we should move forward.
Just a quick comment, and it's pulled up on the map there. The area just north of the recreational land, that whole subdivision is one acre, so there is one-acre lots. And then I do want to point out, because you have it pulled up there, right across the street, across Coates Road from those one-acre lots, you can see three or four parcels that are, yes, they're zoned SF2 for five acres, but they are, the lots themselves are actually like a half acre. They're smaller than this proposed.
There are half-acre lots there?
Yes.
I think he's talking about maybe this area.
Yes, that was right there.
I have to blow it up a little bit here.
The two that are...
I'm trying to get to it right now, just give me a second, I can't move quick enough here, so I can pull it over, I just gotta...
Is it these two here?
Oh, you got it right. Those right there.
Well, these here?
Yeah.
Area of interest. We gotta be right about here. When I blow it up, it doesn't-
Yeah, we got it.
I mean, you can see that there's lines there. That's-
I, I can see it. One, two, three.
Those are separate lots.
I don't know when that was done ever.
Sometimes you can pull it off on, um, like open kind of gateway. That's what I'm trying to do right now. Unfortunately, the internet's not working here.
Yeah, I know.
There's another after. I, I, I've looked and they are. That's why I'm familiar with that. That's-
I think you're correct on that.
Yes.
He's, he's correct. I've been, uh, I, I did a inspection on one of them.
So-
I know that part.
How did that happen?
Well, because the people got a permit.
To re, to re, to redraw the lot lines?
No, they had nothing to do with lot property.
Well, does, does section them off like that?
I don't know when that occurred. It's been that way since I've lived in Oxford.
But they're still in suburban farm?
Well, those, you can call whatever you want.
We, we can call our parcel suburban farm too.
Well, I, you don't care. I don't, but, so those lots are not conforming.
I can't speak in regards to it, because it's been that way for, I've been, I've lived up here twenty plus years right now. It's been that way ever since I've lived here. And I live right there off Coriel Drive, right at Coates Road. I mean, I'm very familiar with the property, so.
The, the lot, you see where the arrow is pointing to the, the property question?
The area of interest. You mean this area?
The area of interest, right. Right. If you go down a little bit below to the right, those two parcels there, no, you're going too far down. Just a couple, couple, couple of plots right where your concern is at. To the right, right there. Are those five acre parts?
Those, those are five acre. Yeah, 'cause the ones, the ones to the, on the other side of Coates, those are all ten acre. So.
All right. So there's actually four lots there?
There's several lots. I mean, there's, if you keep driving down Coates Road, it goes a long ways. They're all big parcels.
No, no, I'm talking the small ones. There's four, right?
Three, three are outside, one, one that sits behind you.
Three right here. He's right here.
There's but four total.
Yeah.
Are big-
So one of your standards is compatibility with the surrounding area. Um, so, again, the, some of the smaller lots, whether they are in the R three single family that is to the north, the R two single family, I'm sorry, that's to the north. Um, uh, the R three that's to the north, um, separated by the park, um, or the ones that are zoned, um, SF two, um, you could look at that, but if you look at the predominant land use pattern, it is five to ten acres, um, in the, in the area. So it's compatibility with the area.
Well-
The surrounding area is your standard.
All right, Mister Turner, at this point, do you have any more comments?
No.
Okay, Mister Bailey, do you, do you have comments you'd like to make?
I'm good right now.
Um, I was thinking of John, or, I'm sorry, Mister Ballard. Go ahead.
All right. Can I answer the applicant question? Um, what has significantly changed between then and, um, now? Why you're specifically asked, or has significantly changed?
New director, change in leadership. I'm guessing Ron's philosophy back in the day was to hold on to that as a rentable parcel with the, the house and being a landlord. My vision is to eliminate the liability, put it back on the tax rolls, and then use the funds from the sale to put the money back into the parks.
Do, do you not get the rental money from that in your account?
We do, yeah.
John, you made a comment earlier.
Yeah, I, I just want to kind of close with this. I did some research on the internet. And what I'm concerned about is that an island will, this part parcel of inconsistency use on a zoning map creates a suspicion by the casual observer that a landowner has deemed singled out for a favorable treatment. And that's my big concern. We have, we have the inconsistencies with the land use map. But two years from now, four years from now, when a resident turns over ownership and they want to go and put a one acre or one point five acre in front on, on, on Sanders Road or over on Coates Road, what have we created when they go back and look at the records? That's what my concern is.
I think there was the answer that, that doesn't set us up for that, but.
I have a stupid question.
I don't think there's any stupid.
I, I just, I'm trying to think outside the box here.
We need to get it all out.
Yeah, I, I'm, I, like I said, I commend what he's trying to do. I think it makes perfect sense. I'm just not in favor of, personally, of, of not doing a five acre, uh, parcel. So you're saying you can't add more property because of your buildings?
Of the current use of the property, I mean.
Right, you're, you're using- My stupid question would be, can you produce a five acre parcel and put in a caveat where the Parks and Rec gets a fifty year lease on the portion that you're using for a dollar a year or something like that? I don't know about fifty years.
I guess, I guess anything's possible. I mean-
I, I'm just saying, you know, it still keeps a five acre parcel intact, and it stays within the conformity of the area, and you're leasing a portion of it for your building for a period of time. You know, twenty-five, thirty, you know, you'll be probably all be gone by that time anyway, and that'll be somebody else's problem, but that's my only, I mean, is that stupid? No?
I'm trying to go to a section that we have here that's done by Mister Kennedy, so just get bear with me. I don't have all the numbers exactly where they're in some locations. Take a second. So I want to make some comments. And it wouldn't, it wouldn't reflect on Phil or his job and what he does and what he has now as the director of the Parks and Rec, but when we look, when there's weak signal. What just happened?
Corey, just turn the TV off. I saw him do it.
I didn't touch anything. I'm still on, I'm still online, so what happened here?
They all went off.
They all went.
Did something happen down that way?
Susan?
No, I mean, oh, okay, hang on.
I don't know if you, if you're plugging them.
All right, it could. I, I'm trying not to touch anything right this second. I want to get into this, the next one. Where's it at? Right here. Uh, when I get to this one section, I gotta get to this piece here. And then wasn't there a bigger one of that? Or is that it?
You might need to zoom out a little.
I'm, I'm probably gonna have to zoom.
Go down to the next. There you go.
It's in this one, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let me zoom down a little bit right here. Okay, this is a parcel I want to kind of look at. I'm gonna zoom down just a couple more down this. So, Phil, and this doesn't reflect on you at all, but I believe some of these buildings may have been constructed without permits, because I've been here for a while. I didn't do any inspections on this one. Uh, I did inspections on this guy here. This was all permitted. I know that for a fact. This is a maintenance building. I'm not sure about this little guy right here.
That, that's existing from the old farm.
From the old farm, okay. And then this-
That's existing from the old farm.
From the farm, so, but relative to all that, which doesn't reflect on you, it kind of caused, it caused a little, this building right here, which is next to a property line, when they grant this variance in the distance that's now attached to it, it doesn't comply to code. That's kind of a, and what he's getting at is, if you would have taken, and I think part of the reason is, where did my cursor go? It's, this is a septic system which is going to represent what is needed for this house. This is a septic system that's represented for what you need for Parks and Rec. And he's trying to say you should just create a bigger parcel somehow to make this all happen. So I think what he's saying is you should go this way of good grief, and there's stuff that's constructed down through there. What is this pad right here?
That's community garden.
It's a what?
Community garden.
Oh, a community garden. So that's not something that, the only thing that's really difficult is this one right here, right?
Yeah, I mean, the-
Because if you were to, if you were to go this direction and create the parcel size that what Ed's talking about, you would be in compliance with the district and wouldn't have to have a rezoning request to do a land division. Correct? Or you still have to get a rezoning request. Excuse me. I said that backwards. But he would be asking for a rezoning for a property that complied with the district it was in, or going to be adjacent to.
It would take away the spots.
I got my brain on now. Somehow I've been like this all day.
Mister Chair? Could you scroll down on that a little bit to show Sanders Road?
Uh, oh, I'd have to go the other direction.
Can you go north?
Can I go north? Or, or do you mean hit?
The property go north?
You mean the petitioner or?
The petitioner take the property north.
You mean this way?
Yes. You may have to move the road, which would be a lot-
This, this drive?
This drive. But if they want, could they go north with that to get their five acres?
You mean this way?
Yes.
Well, they might have to go so far that it would chop them off from the road access. I think the big reason they wanted this piece of property in the first place was to have access to another way out of the park.
Well, can't they just redirect the road?
Why don't, I can't answer those questions, 'cause I, I'd have to have an engineer draw it all up to see how it fits and works. I mean, I can figure it out.
The road's not the concern. It's, it's our whole maintenance operation which is right there. I mean, we moved the maintenance operation back there, so all those buildings that we were looking at are all the, the home of our maintenance operation and on the storage yard is behind it.
All these right in here. All these right in here.
So I, I, we've maximized the use or the, the land available the best we could without shorting ourselves and, and knowing there's no way to get to five acres. I mean, we could, we could go back a little further, but then we're into our septic field, and that's not good either, so.
Well, a couple of the problems I'm having is why is this property in that way unique to the point where there's not really been a significant change, and that's what you were looking for earlier? And to make this as part of the rezoning request, and then Megan's saying to make this as a recommendation, we gotta come up with some findings of fact to make, to make it look like it can typically happen. I'm listening to some new stuff to me tonight going, this might, this might be kind of difficult. I didn't think it was as difficult in the beginning when I first looked at this whole thing back, it was earlier in the year. Listening to Ed, listening to John, Mister Ballard, it means it's good. And plus spot, spot zoning, and I don't know now.
Mister Chairman?
I don't want to be a heel here, but-
I have another question.
And who's it for?
Uh, it would be for the director.
The petitioner.
For the petitioner.
All right, clear.
Okay. Uh, the building itself, the house, what is it like inside? Is it in good shape?
Yeah.
Is it a low class rental?
No.
So there wouldn't be any desire to remove it, tear it down, get rid of it?
I mean, we could, 'cause then we could go build a banquet hall or something like that that's permitted in the area, so, I mean.
But you're depriving yourself of revenue. But you're hoping to get out of the sale. Right? Is that what you're saying?
I, I mean, if we tore the house down, then, yeah, I mean, then, then we don't have any revenue at all, so, um, it's not really, I mean, unless we want to expand our maintenance operation, there's no recreational use to it. This is the best use of the land, and it's the best use for the township of the land, so that's why we're here with this proposal. I mean, putting another recreational opportunity in, banquet hall, club lounge, rental hall, driving range, I mean, those don't make sense there either.
You're talking about what's, what's-
What's permitted in the recreational district.
What would be permitted in the district that it's now zoned.
Correct.
You, you have all the money in the world to do all that stuff, right?
Right. I wish.
I get it on out, but I'm trying to-
Do, do you have a buyer for it?
Yes.
You do?
The current tenant, yes.
Yeah, the current tenant. So you are, this is an easy thing to do.
Correct. Like, like I said, the timing just makes sense.
Well, for him, it's an easy thing. I mean, he's gonna get-
Well, it hasn't been so far, but-
Well, yeah, I know. I get it, but it's not like you gotta market the house to sell it. It's all, you've got a potential buyer already.
Correct. And the market is in our favor to sell it right now.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
I think we, we're ready for a motion.
I move to recommend denial to the Oxford Township Board of Trustees for a rezoning from our recreation to R three single family residential of one point one three acres, a parcel number zero four three zero two zero 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 five eight, as depicted in the survey submitted by the owner of the property, based upon the findings that the applicant does not meet all the factors, well into the pertinent pursuit of section eighteen point three of the Oxford Township zoning ordinance.
I guess I would need support for discussion.
I'll support for discussion.
Okay, I have a, I'm not gonna try to reread the whole thing, but I have a request for denial from Mister Nolan, support from Mister Hunwick.
Since I, I like to ask, I can just open up the discussion quickly.
This is a rec, this is as a recommendation for denial of the rezoning of our recreational to our rezoning district. So, let's, let's see if there's any discussion with any of the planning commission members at this point in time. I'm gonna go to your direction first, Mister Turner. Are you still trying to pull something up, Mister Bailey?
I'm just looking.
Okay. Do you have any questions at this time? I want to ask everybody if they have any, I'm, okay, over the board.
Yeah.
Is there anybody that has any questions at this time for discussion on this motion?
Well, I have a comment.
Well, that's, that's discussion.
I, I want to say, I, I fully support what you're trying to do. I really do. And I think that's, you, what you're doing is smart. My problem is, is I have a problem approving the one acre split versus what's there. And I'm wondering if there's any way you could come up with some solution to come up with a plausible way of putting the five acre parcel together that works for you and the homeowner.
Mister Chair, can I have a point of order? Discussion is supposed to be among the commissioners on the motion itself.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you for that comment.
Well, okay, I, I, I think what he's trying to do is smart, and I, I, I wish he would.
This, okay, this is your discussion on the motion?
Yeah, yeah. I think what he's trying to do is smart. I'm just having a problem with the one acre split. And if there's a different way of doing it, um, otherwise, if, I, I'd have no problem approving it, but this, this is a problem for me, but-
So we can call, we can call for the vote.
You have more discussion, not me?
Uh, I was, well, I was gonna make a very similar comment in which the, I mean, unfortunately, I didn't get a significant, a significant change within the reason why it needs to be, um, changed. I, I didn't, I didn't get that, unfortunately, I didn't get that. And it, and it, and I, I'm not hearing that it's, it meets that, that, that five acres, and with it being resi-, uh, recreational, and given that, I think that, I, I'm, that there could be favoritism of some sort, not meeting all the requirements in that, not getting that.
All right. We, we can call, we can call the order of vote, right?
If you feel you're ready, yes.
I, I think we're ready for a vote. I don't think John's had any more discussion. I don't think Ed does. I know what he said. Mister Bailey and Mister Turner didn't seem to have any. I don't have any more discussion. So, somehow I lost this whole thing, but, um, Susan, we're gonna need, we're gonna need a roll call vote.
Bailey?
Yes.
Hunwick?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Berger?
Well, I gotta tell you, in the beginning, I wasn't that way, but after hearing everything tonight, I'm gonna go yes also.
Okay, so the motion passed to recommend denial to the township board.
All right. Where the heck we at in our agenda? Let me get, let me get back to something here real quick. Okay, we have no new business. Uh, we have, do we have any communications or committee reports at this time? Anything from Economic Development Committee? I don't think so. Ordinance Review Committee, we have, actually, will you help some of this, Megan? Because I'm not, I'm not together tonight. So thanks for your-
You're welcome. Ordnance Re- The Ordnance Review Committee met last Thursday. Um, was it last Thursday, or is it, yeah, last Thursday? They passed, uh, they recommended, uh, ordinance change dealing with noise and, um, generators, um, to come to this body. Um, and so the small ordinance change, just giving an exception- Um, and so, the small ordinance change, just giving an exception for noise regulations when generators are either running for, um, weekends or during electrical outage, because typically those generators run at a higher decimal level than is allowed by, um, the standards in the zoning ordinance. Um, they're also working on a sign ordinance, um, your sign regulations currently are not in compliance, um, with, uh, US case law, um, so we're looking to update those, um, and that probably won't come to you for another, I, I would think, like, in the summer, if we can, um, but we'll keep you updated, I'm gonna work on that.
I think we did, you guys have already done pretty extensive work, even when I was gone in April on that.
Yeah.
And it's got a hell of a start, so I'm thinking, you know, if we keep going, we should be ready by fall.
I would think so.
Yeah, I mean, because, in my opinion, signs are very, uh, difficult to talk about with everybody's opinions, I'll say it that way, so thank you.
Welcome.
Um, that was from, that was from our economic ordinance review committee, I don't know, I don't see Mr. Sharp here at all, so I don't think he's got any comments, and I don't know if you and Megan have any more comments you want to make at this point in time.
Just that, um, your June eighth meeting is canceled, um, due to lack of agenda items on June twenty-second, um, there will be those ordinance provisions that I spoke about, um, and for you to look at the text and decide whether there's changes or, and if you want to call a public hearing on those, um, and also a training, like we did for CVA, um, with a representative of the Kelly Group and myself.
Did you say no meeting or something?
No meeting in two weeks.
On June eighth?
June eighth.
But we did, because of that educational component too, that's driving part of the information we're gonna have on the June twenty-second, and plus some requests from ORC to have the, uh, vows on that agenda, I don't know, Cheryl, we got anything else on that?
Um, June eighth?
June twenty-second.
June twenty-second.
Too far away, right?
Currently, but they've got time to get something in between now and.
And then, okay, so then I guess we're gonna adjourn this meeting this evening at seven fifty, close enough.